We'll call the board of the Stevensville Town Council meeting agenda for Thursday, October 23rd. Janelle, would you please take the vote.
Councilor Breg.
Here.
Councilor Barker.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Michelson.
Here. Would you all please stand for the collective meeting.
I pledge allegiance to my land and to the United States of America. And in this republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hear with me a little bit if you can't hear me, I'm under the weather, so. Move on to public comments. Under three, public comments on anything not on the agenda tonight, not on the agenda. Seeing none, move on to the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve council meeting minutes of 10:9, 2025, please? Councilmember Smith.
I move to accept minutes of 10:9, 2025.
We have a motion by councilmember Smith, do we have a second? Councilmember Barker.
I second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Barker on the minutes. Do we have a discussion from the council? You just took it out of minutes. Seeing no comments from the council, I'll move over to the public. Does the public have any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote.
Councilor Breg.
Aye.
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
Councilor Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
While we're talking about minutes, I have a move. I'd like to move that we bring up the minutes of 9:25, 25 to, we did not approve those, so we'd like to get them approved, so we need to bring it back for correction and bring it back before our next meeting. Okay.
I can put that on the, I can put that on the November 13th meeting as a vote correct to bring that back?
No, do you want to get a second here?
I'll second.
Okay, here. We have a motion, we have a second to bring, to correct those minutes and bring them back on the 13th. Okay. Have a motion, have a second. Do we have discussion on the council? Seeing none from the council, we have a motion from the public. Any comments? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote.
Could I please ask a quick question?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda tonight, so I'm just confused how we would do that tonight. I think I explained in the email, the best case scenario for that is that it comes back for a vote to bring it back, and then I'll go back in and, and re-listen to those pieces and, and add any things that were missing or omitted, and then, it would then come back to the next scheduled meeting for approval.
That's right.
I just don't know how to, to do that tonight if it not, it was not on the agenda.
We can make a motion, we have a second.
Unless there are.
You can, I think you can bring it up.
Yeah.
In council comments, in the council rules.
That would probably be the best place to bring it back. Yes.
Okay. That way, council of this to council comments, then. Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
Seeing number one, item number five, approval of biweekly claims. Can I get a motion, please? Councilmember Smith.
I move that we approve claims number 19982 to 200000.
We have a motion by councilmember Smith to accept the claims, do we have a second? Councilmember Breg.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Breg to accept the claims. Are there any comments on the claims? Over to council. I'd like to say that on the pavilion side of it, those were disaster money. Gina did put bids on it and we proceeded more than. And that was from. Capitoli Fencing or whatever that is. So, all this fence work is from the disaster. The fence work on the pool, pavilion.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up that we have to submit the fencing and the pavilion fixes to MIA. That's a requirement of the state. And then the state will pick up our deductible. So, you will see, we have the payments, we submit that to MIA, they will bring them up to us, but they charge us the $1,500 deductible, and then it'll be reimbursed by the state. That's kind of how the request of that, for me to go in here and ask, oh, it's part of the disaster, so. So you'll see that coming forward, and of course, I'll explain that again.
And also on the city services, on the, no, not the, the pool, privacy, that came out of the, for security regulations. Added privacy fabric for the inside of the pool fins. That was that. Any questions from the council on the claims? Very good. Okay, seeing no comments from the council on the claims, I'll turn it over to the public. Are there any comments from the public on the claims? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote.
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
Councilor Smith.
Aye.
And Councilor Breg.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, under new business, councilmember Smith.
I'd like to move that we take item C and place it up into A, and A and B, we can take that together.
Okay, we'll start out with, can I get a motion to suspend council rules to move item C, especially with a permit on up to above item A? That's right, we're going to do it. Councilmember Brown.
I move that we move agenda item C up to A.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Brown to move item C up to A, is there a second? Councilmember Smith. We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Smith. We have a discussion from the council. Seeing none, do we have a discussion from the public? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote.
Councilor Breg.
Aye.
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
And Councilor Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. We'll move on to item number C, which is now A, discussion decisions, especially with a permit for county, country, Christmas, and parade of lights. Can I get a motion, please? Councilmember Barker.
I make the motion to approve special events permit for country, Christmas, and parade of lights.
We have a motion by councilmember Barker, do we have a second? Councilmember Breg.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Breg, do we have a discussion from the council? To show.
My, my general, every time question is, has, have your plans been, are you going to give them to Chief Motley and Chief Boat for review prior to?
Yeah, so they, everything, everything's been submitted, so this is a no alcohol event, so traffic control plan has been submitted through town clerk. Same one that we used last year for the parade route, where we're closed down streets, all that kind of stuff. We do have two burn pits that we usually run, fire pits, so both of those have been submitted. The only change that you would have seen from the last couple of years is one of the fire pits is going to move pentagon over to CJ's.
Oh, okay.
He's going to let us do it there. Other than that, everything's the same, but everything's been submitted to town clerk, NDT approval, so that's it. And again, it's that shortened parade route that actually has to start here on the second, because.
Something about Santa Claus or something got in trouble.
Yeah, they, they threatened me with rather large fine if I tried to involve the living center again. Me, not the club. By the way, everything's the same, lights over Main Street, stage, Christmas story, turn on the lights, all that kind of stuff. Here, just for a couple of hours.
Kind of, you know, if you'd like to switch.
I don't have one, usually that was always handled by the town through a coloring contest.
That has not been discussed this year. We did one last year.
We did, yes, we did one last year.
So we, there's something we need to discuss, we spent a little bit of time in there for sure.
So yeah, or you know, you're just trying to do something different. You have questions or anything on the list?
Any further comments from the council? To show? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote.
Councilor Breg.
Aye.
Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
And Councilor Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number A and B. Do you have a motion, Mr. Smith?
I move that we suspend council rules to make A and B one action.
Okay, we have a motion to make special number A and number B, which is to have the observance of Thanksgiving and Christmas, and when they have one meeting in November, December, which could be dead for probably fifty years. So, that's the way it works. We can always have special meetings if we need to be, so. With that, can I get a motion, please? Yeah, second.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion from the council? Discussion from the public? Seeing none, Janelle, would you please take the vote.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
Councilor Smith.
Aye.
Councilor Breg.
Aye.
And Councilor Barker.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item number D, the last one, final plat approval, Twin Creek Space Two. Councilmember.
I'm going to have to stay in front of the discussion since I work for a title company.
Okay. Okay. Before I make a motion to get going, Max Wolf would like to be on the phone, just in case you guys have any questions for him. And Ron Ewart is back there, he is PCI.
Hello, this is Max Wolf.
Hi, Max, it's Janelle, town clerk with the town of Stevensville, we're calling you into the meeting. We are on agenda item D, the final plat approval for Twin Creek Space Two.
Hey, thanks so much for calling, and, and thanks for having us, Mayor and council members. I'll let you guys proceed.
Thank you, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Perfect.
Were you moved it?
No, we haven't made a motion.
We haven't made a motion yet, as she started, so we need a motion to start yet. Councilmember Barker.
I make the motion for final plat approval of Twin Creek's Phase Two.
We have a motion by councilmember Barker, do we have a second? Councilmember Breg.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Breg to approve the final plat approval of Twin Creek's Phase Two. Do we have a discussion from the council? Councilmember Smith.
I'd like to, in the two hundred some pages of this plat here, discovered a hiccup. And if we're to look at page twenty-six, I believe it is, you'll find the plat, the plat map, and it is stamped dated June 13th, 2022. And then on page thirty-six and thirty-seven is the DEQ approval letter. And on the second page, it says in the first paragraph, "It is further understood that construction of this project must be completed within three years of this approval date", which is the date of June 13th, 2022. If more than three years elapsed before completing construction, plans and specifications must be resubmitted and approved before construction begins. That seems rather clear. And then also on page 148, we have a town council meeting minutes where a two-year extension was granted, which brought it up to 2025. But the date is in June, June of 2025, and so this has elapsed, and it looks like they have to resubmit it, unless something else has happened that we don't have, you know, record of here.
Go ahead, Janelle.
I have nothing to comment on, this has been in the package for an entire week, and I'm just, these concerns are just coming up tonight, so I have unfortunately no comment to these questions at the moment.
Resubmit it with every plat.
Possibly Max and/or Ron may be a long answer to those questions.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Ron Ewart, I'm with, I'm with PCI. So, we do have an approval that goes until January 15th of 2026. And I have to find the documents, I'm going to, as far as that June 13th deadline, I mean, we knew about that, we've been in contact with DEQ on it, and all the plans and specifications were developed according to the plans. So. This has gone through like three or four different ownerships.
Go ahead.
So we're doing the best.
Can I ask a question? Go ahead.
So this has been resubmitted then to DEQ, and they've, they've extended it to 26?
Well, I, I can't say they, they've extended it, but, I mean, we've worked with DEQ on things like the, the storm, stormwater pollution prevention plan, things like that. And we've been in contact with them on this, and I'm the planner, so I don't directly work with them. But we do have plat approval until mid-January.
Can I ask what pages again you said that they were issues on, please?
Max, on our, our packet page thirty-six, twenty-six, and thirty-seven is the main page that had that paragraph that I read for you. We also have.
If I may, this is, oh, sorry, whenever I can speak, just give me the floor, please.
Go ahead, Max.
It's my understanding that we did get a DEQ extension, they've been working with us throughout this whole process. They actually came at the beginning, when we started the infrastructure, a couple of months in, and did an inspection, and we have a report from them, from what they wanted us to change around sites, so DEQ has been aware of the construction going on, and, you know, I, it's my understanding that we did get an extension, and hopefully we have some documents for that to show, and, and we can get that to you if need be. And that as well, kind of to reiterate what Ron said, it was that January, I believe, sixteen, 2026 is what our extension day was. So, thank you.
What was that, January what?
Sixteen.
January.
Twenty twenty-six. And that was the, the one that we just passed, is that correct? No, that was the twenty twenty-seven. Phase three. But you guys were here and passed the twenty twenty-six, I was not at that meeting, I don't believe. For the extension, is that correct?
On phase two?
Yes.
I think you were, you were here, you were on the council, that was in twenty-three.
But I don't think I attended, I think I was on from that particular meeting, I don't remember. I am.
I'll call the council, I don't know where you're extending, get some of those in here. We extended it.
It was Brown Lowell and Michelson were the ones who, and Brown abstained.
I guess he wanted to go. Max?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, did you have something to say?
No, not that. Oh, well, you know, if, if the days are what we're concerned about, and if we have to show proof of, of that extension, I can, I can try to find out, but you know, my end. If there's other issues, we can, we can talk about that, and then we could, you know, there's a possibility of doing a condition of showing proof of this for, for plat approval. Yeah, on my end, if January sixteen, 2026 was our extension day, and DEQ has been aware of the ongoing construction.
Any further comments from the council? Councilmember Barker.
I believe that those should be in this packet, if we're going to approve that, I believe it should be in there.
Extension?
Yes, at least.
Okay.
It's my understanding that it should be in, I don't, I'm not actually exactly aware of all the pages that you have in front of you, but it should, it should be in there. Ron, do you know any, do you know if it's in there or not?
All right. No, i- it's not in there because everything that's in the packet had to do with construction plans and meeting all the conditions of approval, and that was not part of either of those two. You know, like I said, I, I can check with our engineers and see, you know, where we're at on that, because I can't, I don't know.
Would the council be willing to table this until they get to the, to crack it and bring it back to special meeting? Kirk, yeah, something. Go ahead.
Do keep in mind that Mr. Wolf has paid his filing fee on October 16th, his twenty-day clock did start. So please do keep that in mind.
We have to, we have a twenty-day time frame.
I think what Max just brought up was that contingents piece of, you know, we can, they are looking to approve their final, for you guys to approve their final plat with those items.
With conditions.
With conditions of these being turned in, correct? But do keep in mind, he has paid his filing fees.
Councilmember Breg.
So based on that timeframe, would we be able to table it and then do a special meeting and let this done so that he could do it within his twenty days? Or do you think that's not doable?
It's, we could do it next week if they get the DEQ paperwork.
Sounds like something that could be found rather quickly.
Right.
And then it could come back when the meeting, you know, it's tightly.
I'm just looking for the meeting minutes right now from that meeting, but it's taking a little longer than I expected.
Is the town not aware, I mean, is there, you know, records from that of, of what you say, see as our extension? Because on our end, I've always been told January 16th, 2026.
I know.
The start of the DEQ thing goes, DEQ has, has been aware of this, and, and that shouldn't be an issue because we have been in contact with them throughout this whole process.
I believe the council would like that in writing, correct? Stacy?
I believe so. I think it, for it to be on the record, to show that everything is, is put together, I really believe it should be there as well.
Guess the best thing to do then is table it. Let's do that. Do that motion, and second to table it, to bring that, get the DEQ paperwork and bring it back to special meeting.
I, I move that we table this, this discussion until the, the proof of the January 16th, 2026 is provided to us, and, and we can have a special meeting or whatever it takes.
May I make a comment before?
Yes, go ahead, Max.
I would just like to say, if there was a possibility, if this was the only issue that we have, if we could do something in the way of approval once received, so we don't have to hold a special meeting for this again, and say we can get you the documents tomorrow, upon receival of the documents, you know, we could get approval.
Is that allowable?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm asking.
Yeah, you guys are making condition within that. The same way like, like when you approve minutes and you let me to change something, and then you guys vote on the minutes, and the minutes pass, it's a condition on me putting a comma in or adding something, so it would be the same type of thing.
I never got a second, so we only have to bring that up. So let me re, let me redo this. I move that we approve this plat approval for Twin Creek's on condition that we, we receive the written documentation from the DEQ for an extension to January 16th of 2026.
No motion, we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To approve Twin Creek's Phase Two final plat upon conditions that the DEQ provides the paperwork that extended it to January. Go ahead.
I don't think the public are about to talk about this.
Well, they will in a second.
Okay.
They will in a second.
Okay. It was just confused.
Yep. Go ahead.
So I want to bring it back up, you guys just said DEQ approving it to 2026.
That's what we were told, maybe.
No, you guys asked two things, you asked about DEQ, and then you asked about the final plat extension, and when was that, which is 2026. So I just want to clarify, if you're looking for a date of January 2026 from DEQ, and a date of the final plat approval being bumped out to 2026, January 2026.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, may I, may I have a second? I think you have the same, same question for me on my end. It was the town extension for January 16th, 2026, and then we will, I'm not sure the specific DEQ day, but we will find the extension letter for that.
I, I've never seen that one, Max, have you, Janelle?
From DEQ?
Yeah.
No, we would have, what had the original when the whole project started, and anything that they did on their, their end would have just been between them, DEQ, and the developer, and/or maybe PCI, maybe Jeff Seer, along those lines. I didn't.
And it is something that Jeff Seer did when we were holding off on the project for a little bit. I, councilmember is correct, I, I believe that that date did lapse for DEQ, we resubmitted with DEQ, and that might be where the confusion is, so hopefully it's just an ICC email tomorrow to, to sort us out.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion from the council? On approval and upon conditions of the DEQ, bring me the letter of the extension. Are there any other comments on this whole plat approval? I see that you brought in a check today? Or?
Yes, I did. I was asked to drop the check off.
Yes, and that, and, and thank you so much, I would like to say that this is my first plat approval, being, you know, a young mayor still, but I would like to say that Max and Ron have went above and beyond to help get this thing done. I remember earlier this year, we had a walk-through, and Max and I had a discussion on the little water pressure in some of the houses on Phase One, and Max agreed that he would put in pressure pumps in each home in Phase Two if they needed it, and he also even gave us. And he also even gave us a letter stating that he would be willing to give the town up to fifty thousand dollars to help with a lift station that needed to be down the road, and we had problems there. So that was very great for me. So thanks, Max.
Thank you, Mayor, goes both ways. It's really been great working with you guys as well. I appreciate all the effort both ways.
Yeah, and last week I wasn't here, but Steve did a walk-through out there with them. And Steve, do you have anything to report on that?
I mean, they look good. You just compare the plat, which is just a draw. I'm almost sick too, so. So you take that plat and you look at the real ground, and you match up things. The distances matched. There was a very short punch list, couple of cracks in the sidewalks and cleanup things. The curb and sidewalks look overall very good. I looked at the- oh, the pressure tests for the water lines, they were good. Thousand gallons a minute out of the five, that's good. What else? E. coli in the- in their new main lines. They have to send them to the state, they came back good. So I looked at every single one of the independent agencies that are governing them, and they passed every test without fail. Everything looked great. So as far as I'm concerned, it's full speed ahead when we get this, when we get the documentation, hopefully, tomorrow. Everything looked good to me, they're good to work with. They haven't cut any corners as far as I can see. The striping is on the roads. Jeff Seer explained to me how the storm drains work. I like it. It's better than some of them that we have in town, that are failed. I think it's a pretty good project. I mean, I haven't done a hundred of them, but to me, this looks pretty good, and it matches up with what was proposed and what was approved.
Thanks, Steve. Councilmember?
I just have one other little minor issue, and it has nothing to do with the approval here, but kind of informational and opinion. They have a common area land dedication and cash in lieu requirement when regarding a park. And apparently, they're going to go in lieu of, and it's going to be eleven thousand four hundred and ten dollars. And I just want to say, the opinion is, when we get that check after the final plat filing, that should go to parks, our parks and not general fund.
That check was dropped on thirty-five percent. That's where it's at. Go ahead, Tim.
Parks is in the general fund.
But it is in, let me get your money.
Dedication, that's what I'm talking about.
That's where it's at. You sent a letter, I'm still waiting. Go ahead.
Heidi Motley, eight oh-two College Street. And I'm here on behalf of Vicki Motley. She's under the weather tonight, so she sent a letter. And it says, she apologizes for not being here, but she is sick and didn't want to come and spread her germs. So she would like to address section five of this agreement. It states, common area park, eleven percent of the land proposed to be subdivided is required for a park dedication. Five percent of that shall be in land donation, and six percent shall be a cash in lieu of land donation. The side notes on the page set the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and ten dollars that would go to the town. She is requesting, as a member of the park board advisory committee and a resident of the town of Stevensville, that the money be placed in a park line item or a CD and that it not go directly into the general fund. She feels that this way, we will have money to make repairs on park equipment or to the pool. She also feels that if it goes just directly into the general fund and is not earmarked, that we will not have money for repairs, and it will be spent on other things other than the parks, so. And then if you guys need the letter she sent through, please.
Comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
This is from Chief Motley. I bumped into him as I was walking down here. So he asked me to make a comment on his behalf. It is, he would- he says he would like to see a fire hydrant at the end of Blacksmith Lane. He says it's over a thousand feet from the existing fire hydrant on Blacksmith, and it's a little bit long. But he said, it's a concern, it's not- it's a concern that he has, just- he says going east-west, it is about three hundred feet from the fire hydrant. And north-south, I believe, Blacksmith runs. It's over a thousand feet down to the end of the cul-de-sac on Blacksmith. There is not a fire hydrant there.
Do you have that long?
That's good to know, I'll pass that along to Jeff and Matt, our engineers, and that's here, so if he has any comments. But be aware, we're saying, although we did go through all of our approvals and so on, that's something that can be- that could be addressed.
Yep. And I think it should be, because it would be a safety item. And I think Chief Motley would probably know better than all of us when the hydrants need to be placed in a distance.
Probably, sure.
I think it would be-
Personal insurance also? Fire insurance, yeah, the people.
Any other comments from the public? Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, you know, would you please take the vote?
Councilmember Barker?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Abstain.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
And Councilmember Breck?
Aye.
Motion passes, three, four, and one, stay. Thank you. Moving on to board reports. Thanks, Max.
Thank you, Max, I'm going to hang up now, okay?
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. We'll be in touch soon.
Thank you.
Any board reports?
Not really a board report, but we actually had, for planning and zoning last night, we had an open house, very well attended. They had boards lined up along the wall where we could have our town citizens come in and mark what was important to them and what wasn't important to them. We had Kevin with Great West and Danny here also to answer any questions that the public had for them. It was just, it was very well, I thought, very well attended for, and a lot of great input back on that. So hopefully, when we get ready to bring it in front of the council, I mean, we've got a ways down the road yet, but we've actually got a lot of accomplished in a short amount of time, which is, I think we have a really great planning and zoning board that works well together. So I'd like to thank those citizens that came out and spent some time here and looking over what we had proposed as a zoning board, so.
Thank you, Stacy.
I have to say, it was fun putting on all the little stickers.
Okay. Memorial council comments? Then I'll move on to executive reports. Go ahead.
This is a board report, then?
This was board report, so.
Oh, excuse me, move on to council conference. Councilmember Brown?
I just wanted to clear something up from our last council meeting regarding the garden spot. I went back and checked the plat for Dickerson Trap. That, there is a nine, nine point four feet strip between lots four and five. That strip is dedicated as part of the park. I just wanted to make that clear for everybody.
It's about the size of a riding lawnmower, isn't it?
Is that on the fifth street side that goes in?
Yes. Yeah.
It could be orange, it could be, because the other place on the-
Yeah.
West side is best off now. Any other town council comments?
Okay, this is where we make that motion?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move that we bring up the minutes of nine twenty-five twenty-five as they're corrected and bring it back to the council for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second to bring over the minutes back for approval. Special from the council. Special from the public. Seeing none, you know, would you please take the vote?
Councilmember Breck?
Aye.
Councilmember Barker?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Councilmember Smith?
Aye. Motion passes, four to zero. Thank you. Move on to executive report, I don't have much of one. I attended the Montana League Cities and Towns Conference last week in Billings, and about the only thing I can report is, there was a lot of good stuff going on. We were told again to be very, very diligent on the property taxes when they come in here and there after, it's going to be down. And so revenue streams is going to be down, so we're going to have to plan accordingly for that. And also, the MMIA will no longer cover workman's comp. They could not compete with the state fund anymore, so they're phasing that out by July first of twenty-two-six. And they will work with all the towns and cities on finding us coverage for workman's comp, which will probably be the state fund. And also, last night, she said we had a successful meeting with our planning. And I want to say, if it's okay with the council, Steve, could you get up and explain a little bit about the cellular meters that we just found out about?
So we just gone through this big water meter change-out, which is good, but a new, better product has come out. It's a cellular meter that transmits, it's a different type of signal. From the signal that Cody uses when he rides around in a truck, it's like a hundred percent effective, readable. A person doesn't have to ride around in a truck anymore. It's a cell, it's a cell signal, just like your phone. And you're going to check it on a computer without any riding around, without buying new computers, without burning the gas money, without the time. The cost of them is, they set around the same as the meters that we're currently using. They're simpler, they're better, and in- included in this is the ability for each water customer to keep up with their own water usage. It's an app on your phone, your computer, wherever. How much water did I use last month? One, there it is. Each person has a graph, tells them what their peak uses was. You know, if the speakers came up at two o'clock in the morning, it used this many gallons. It breaks everything down perfectly. Seasonally, we saw a whole lot of problems and a whole lot of questions that we've had about our meters not reading. And sometimes, you know, we have to go back and pull the data log off of it and say, well, we might get a leak detect, which all it is, is all of a sudden, somebody used a lot of water in the last week or twenty-four hours. Sometimes we go there and we can't pull that log off of it. It won't work for some reason, and nobody can tell us why it won't work, whether it's the meter, or if it's the program, or if it's the computer we're using. Nobody seems to be able to tell us. Well, we'd like to be able to tell them why. You know, what happened, what time was it? You know, what was going on at that time? We'd like to get more in-depth with it. In fact, I believe yours was one of them, Cody went back and tried to do a data log on yours. I'm not sure if he was able to prove it.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't hear anything.
It didn't work. So for some, it would read it, but-
I think ours is pretty old.
Didn't he, has he not changed? Okay, well, see, that's a perfect- they're going to give us five trial meters. Absolutely free program, and they- and this will be a good test house to put it in right here, Sharon.
There's a question here. So you're saying that we have to replace all the meters?
Well, that's the thing, yeah. This can't happen in a year, but as our current meters go bad, we can replace them with these, with the cellular ones at approximately the same cost as what the ones we have now.
I got you.
So why not, let's think about, we might do it now, but why not just think about, let's switch it over to this new deal. Who was it, Anaconda? There was a town, Alton had one up there, and one is bigger than this, but they're one hundred percent reads. They just went to it. The next biggest thing too, it's a lower level now, but there's an antenna that sticks up in the middle of town. And certain towns' meters went to that antenna and then came back to town hall. This is better than that. This is cellphone. And each individual water customer has the ability to check. I think it's awesome.
Is it true that we're coming to the, about the end of our current meters?
Obviously.
Yeah. Because of the batteries and all that?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we pretty much replaced, pretty much all of them that, you know, we can identify they're bad, and these temporary ones for irrigation, we tend not to mess with those because they're working. They don't, you know, they don't, they pretty much shut off during the winter time, so we don't care about them. But, yeah, we're pretty much to the end of all these replacements. We did almost two hundred in the past year and a half. It was a huge project. So it's ahead of the time that you're going to be talking about this after we got all these new ones. But as these start going bad, and there's going to be others that go bad that we didn't have to replace yet, they're always going bad. So let's think about replacing them with these, see if it works. They're working up price plans for us, because I told them the other day, I said, "I can't buy nine hundred meters at one time, especially on the heels of what we just spent changing out what we already just did." Okay, they're going to work out different packages, different price points, four or you might want, so let's give it a shot. See how it is. They're going to give us five, and if they just utterly fail, then we won't talk about it anymore. But if they work great, let's do it. It's my suggestion.
There is a charge. There is a charge. They're going to give us five meters for you, but there is a charge of ninety-one cents per meter. And that's for the cellular data, so that would be charged on top of that, so.
Not even-
So that would be part of the, you know, part of the package.
Okay, so I keep you up on that, and that's my executive report. Now could I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.